Good evening. The March 5, 2018 meeting of the Anarod County Council is now in session. You are invited to stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's pray. Lord, we are grateful for all your blessings and all your mercies. We recognize that we have failed to -- we have done things you told us not to do. We have not done things that you told us to do. So, we recognize, Lord, that we have failed, and we need to repent of our failures. Lord, we ask for your encouragement, your guidance, so that we can do that and so that we can represent the people of Anarod County in a way that would glorify and edify you. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening once again. Ladies and gentlemen, Madam Secretary, would you please read the ethics statement?
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you. We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject that's not included on the printed agenda, and your remarks will be limited to two minutes. Will the following persons--
Did you get it?
Yes. Will the following persons please come down? Matt Johnston, Melanie Hartwig-Davis, Laura Lutz, Matt Minahan, Robin Turk, and Jennifer Sowers. Please come down and take these seats. And please, as you begin, give us your name and address. I appreciate that for the record. And we'll begin with Mr. Johnston, Matt Johnston. Good evening.
Thank you, Chair.
Sir, I have it. It's not working.
I can screen.
No. Could you move that one down, please? None of them are working. Sorry, we seem to have an issue.
Just hold on for a minute while we figure out the technical difficulty. Most of your two minutes is used up now. Really sorry about that.
Yes, that's mine, yes.
Please go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chair, and members of the council. My name is Matt Johnston. I live at 1639 Chesapeake Lane, Edgewater, Mayo. I'm here tonight to discuss a letter which the neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula Citizens Group sent to each of you last week regarding how the county agreed to allow a developer to clear-cut forest land within the critical area on the Mayo Peninsula without mitigating that forest loss. Earlier this year, Mayo residents woke up to bulldozers and falling trees. That's not uncommon for us, but this time, we decided to dig a little bit deeper. We found that the final approved plat by the county stated that the developer needed to mitigate the loss of 7.24 acres of forest within the critical area. We asked the county to produce the document describing where this mitigation would occur, but no such document exists because the mitigation will never occur. Instead, the county sent back a document showing that they agreed to allow the developer to set aside already-forested land in the resource conservation area and an adjacent lot that the developer also owned as an easement. This easement was likely to never be developed because it did not meet the threshold of a 20-acre parcel in the resource conservation area. So, this agreement, in effect, lost us forest and did not mitigate or preserve any land. Tonight, we ask the council to remedy this situation and ensure that it never occurs again. First, to remedy it, we ask the council to consider replanting these 7.24 acres at South River Farms Park on the Mayo Peninsula within the critical area where there is open space. Secondly, we ask you to immediately undertake a review of the county code now that the Critical Area Commission has demanded that of Anarod County. And we recommend prohibiting conservation easements of existing forest land in lieu of fees or in lieu of mitigation, and we also recommend increasing the fees in lieu of mitigation and encouraging that conservation easements could be donated if it's open space that is unforested, which could then be reforested. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Melanie Hartwig-Davis?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, council. Thank you for this time. Melanie Hartwig-Davis, 501 Bay View Point Drive, Edgewater. Tonight, we will hear many different perspectives on growth, development, and infrastructure. I'm here before you as a resident, sustainable architect, and environmental advocate to share several concerns about what I'm seeing, hearing, and experiencing. Turnbull, as Mr. Johnston just spoke of, is only the latest patch of forest to disappear on the Mayo Peninsula. Because of this, we need the council to create policies that ensure the county is acting within the spirit of the law. Not only is this the right thing to do, the county taxpayers deserve the financial benefits of ecosystem services. Time and time again, I see developers and homeowners allowed to skirt many regulations, including the Forest Conservation Act. As I enter my own neighborhood, the microclimate has dramatically changed due to 18 acres of cleared forest from a different new development. We will never regain this forest land in spite of legislation that strives to preserve or restore it. The developer benefited from the FCA loophole of "break-even point" and received, quote, "credit for retention above the forest conservation threshold of 9.92 acres." A study by the University of Maryland indicates that an acre of trees of forest provides roughly $80,000 in ecosystem services per year to our communities. This is filtering our air. These forests filter our air and water and control runoff. County residents lose out on valuable ecosystem services while the developers' financial benefits multiply as they log the 18 acres of land. It is our tax dollars that now have to make up for the lost ecosystem services those areas were providing. I would like to also provide a comment, a brief comment, in my last 10 seconds to be circumspect about zoning legislation that freezes or forbids the use of viable and proven planning strategies such as variances. They can and are used very well in this county on properties that are old and were developed before the zoning regulations were established. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Ms. Lutz, Laura Lutz?
Hi, I'm Laura Lutz, and I'm at 1652 Cliff Drive in Edgewater, also on the Mayo Peninsula. And I'm here also to talk about the deal that was made to allow the clear-cutting of forest in Mayo's critical area. The purpose of reforestation laws is to prevent exactly what happened here. The purpose is to ensure that, in at least some small way, developers compensate for the forest land that's cleared. Nothing ever fully makes up for that loss because in Maryland, a one-to-one replanning of lost trees almost never occurs. In Anarod County, we can also collect fees from the developer in place of replantings with the idea that those fees will fund tree plantings elsewhere. But we've heard that the county says they can't find any place to plant those trees. Right now, though, that's the best we've got, and this deal doesn't even come close to that. It doesn't matter if the arrangement was legal or not, and we don't really know. It may follow the letter of the law, but certainly not the spirit of the law, to offset the loss of mature forest on sensitive shorelines where they reduce flooding, filter pollution, and clean the air. This deal cemented forest loss in the critical area, period. I personally don't care if it was legal or not. My question for the Schu administration is this: How can this be an example of government leadership that either respects the intent of the law or acts as a sincere guardian of our natural resources? And if the letter of the law allows for this kind of arrangement, then we need help with that law, and you are the legislators. So, I came tonight to ask you to please take a hard look at what's needed and to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lutz. Appreciate it. Mr. Minahan?
Good evening, and thank you for listening. Matt Minahan, 3651 First Avenue, Edgewater, Selby. I'm looking forward to tonight's reading of the Planning and Zoning Bill. I understand that it is going to offer some relief for our development pressures, certainly on our peninsulas. The headlines about the bill sound very promising, the details I'm hopeful about, and looking forward to seeing what's actually in the bill. I have some questions, though. Why limit this to -- if this is such a good idea, why limit this period to just 2019? There seems to be some hope that I hear from the executive branch that, well, we've got a strong planning and zoning guy now, and he's going to prevent bad things from happening. Well, I'd like to know what's going to be different about this period after 2019 than has been the pattern over the past several years. It's been the council that has been, by simple majority, upzoning and rezoning proposals. One of the best parts of Mr. Schu's development proposal that did not pass, but the best part of it was the part requiring a supermajority of this council to make zoning decisions. And I would encourage you, please, to build that into whatever planning and decision-making framework goes forward. Revisit 2019. That makes no sense to stop it there. I don't know what is going to be in the planning and zoning regulation that's going to make life different then, and in the end, you are the decision body on that. So, that's my request to you, is answer the question of why 2019. And the last thing I'll say is, I was offended by the invocation this evening. I think it was a violation of the principles of separation of church and state to invoke the name of Jesus in this prayer.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Robin Turk?
I'm Robin Turk, Warfield Road in Mayo. For the record, a while back, I spoke about the acronym RCA, Resource Conservation Area, in an attempt to get the county to create awareness about county-owned RCAs. My peers and I suggested signage on Triton Beach Road telling citizens that they are entering a resource conservation area. That road is flanked both sides by Beverly Triton Park. I got an email response from the powers-that-be that said, "Signage indicating RCA," quote, "may be confusing to the public." Signage saying you are entering a resource conservation area may be confusing to the public. Signage educating people that there is something here that sustains us would confuse the public? He was right. It is confusing to see our county spend taxpayer dollars to create a giant impervious parking lot within an RCA. It's more confusing to imagine that 100% of Mayo Peninsula's citizens are affected by the hazardous Lockhaven intersection, and our county, instead of choosing to spend money to help that area, wants to spend money to reroute a neighborhood road to create that giant impervious parking lot. It is confusing that our county wants to take away a medevac landing site in order to reroute this neighborhood road and create the giant parking lot.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Ms. Sowers, Jennifer Sowers?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Sowers. I live at 8365 Capel Drive in Pasadena. My daughter attends Chesapeake High School, and my son attends Bodkin Elementary. I'm here this evening to express my concerns for the safety of my child and others at our schools. There are also a great number of parents watching this through the broadcast. For the past four years, my daughter has been sexually harassed, tormented, and mentally abused at school. During this time, she routinely went to the administration for help. Nothing happened. When we became aware of the online bullying report, I submitted it. Nothing happened. As the abuse escalated, and the boy would follow her daily, calling her a name that I can't say in here that insinuates she is promiscuous, telling her that she was worthless and should kill herself. That was every day for her. Last February, with no end in sight, my sweet girl attempted suicide. My girl is not the same girl she was in elementary school. She wears sweats now to conceal her figure and is on medication for depression. I now must keep all of our medication in a lockbox. In closing, our community has requested immediate corrective actions be taken by the Board of Education. We all testified at the last board meeting. We are also requesting a full audit, independent audit, of Anarod County, of all bullying, intimidation, and follow-up practices, accuracy and completeness of the climate surveys and their reporting, and adherence to federal Title IX requirements as a federally-funded institution. We are requesting that the council fully fund the Board of Education budget and also assist us in holding the board accountable for implementing required changes that we've sent to them and also adhering to state mandates, which they currently do not on many levels. Thank you.
And thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith?
Real quick, Ms. Sauer. Since that last board meeting that you conducted, was there any progress on your issue with the school board?
We've met with Dr. Cubic, and she is exploring options, but we haven't had anything significant so far.
Thank you.
So, that's over here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to call five or six more names. Please come down and take these seats. Is Mr. Holden going to go first here? You don't want to go first. We're ready for you if you are, sir. Go ahead. All right, well, the next name I have on the list is Michelle Danoff.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Danoff, 1401 Pennington Court, Edgewater, Mayo Peninsula. I'd like to talk about necessities before niceties. The Mayo Peninsula has been suffering from niceties before necessities. In the 2002 Small Area Plan for Mayo, the intersection of Lockhaven Road and Route 214 was the only road cited as dangerous. The only thing that's happened since then is the addition of more communities in Cajahuanian and Turnbull. In November 2017, the building moratorium was lifted on the Mayo Peninsula. We all received a letter from the county that said, quote, "We wanted to assure the community that no large-scale development will take place on the Mayo Peninsula," only to find there is a permit for 55 houses on Glebe Heights, an area that was targeted as priority conservation. Mayo's fire and EMS response times are below national average, and we desperately need a substation. Yet, over the last two years, hundreds of thousands of dollars and hundreds of community input hours have been spent on five park plans, with $3.4 million going into Beverly Triton Park. The county has restrictions on stormwater runoff, yet plans for over 1,000 parking spaces in these parks, as well as bathhouses, pavilions, and cutting of trees for ballparks, is planned. If your house is on fire, you don't go out and start digging for a pool. When do we start putting necessities before niceties? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danoff. Mr. Schaefer, Ken Schaefer? There's a seat down -- oh, there you go.
Sorry.
That's all right.
I had a little crisis at work. I just got here. I'll be very brief.
Sir, could you just give us your name and address first?
Sure. Ken Schaefer, 1401 Pennington, Edgewater.
Thank you.
I'll follow on to what Ms. Danoff said. We were coming home the other night on the Mayo Peninsula on 214. Tree fell, took out the wires, was on fire. We had to walk 2 and 1/2 miles home because it was going to be a four-hour wait. You know, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. 1,000 parking spaces, there's got to be 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000 cars a day. We heard the county's plan for the parks, and their traffic guy said, "There's no traffic problem on 214." And everyone in the room snorted and said, "Well, you're not driving it then." I think we're putting the cart before the horse, but horse-drawn carts would fit in pretty well with the infrastructure we have. I know it's a state road, and I know this is the county, so we're going to have to work with the state to get the road improved, but the county needs to stop developing things out there and adding traffic to the problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Julia Martin?
Honorable counsel, thank you for your time, commitment, and service to our community. My name is Julia Martin. I'm a lifelong resident of Pasadena. Due to the nature of my testimony, I do wish to keep my address private. It has been provided before you.
Thank you.
I'm also a member of the Anarod County Parent Coalition. The ever-present discussion of school safety requires your support and action. This evening, you will hear testimony and personal experiences, question of accountability, and a unified call to action from our community members. I fully support these efforts as I have experienced the horrific consequences that students face when the schools and county fail to provide a safe learning environment. I entered high school as a bright, cheerful, and naive, honorable student. I quickly became the target and victim of physical and sexual harassment. After many failed attempts of reporting the harassment to school officials, my innocence was taken at the age of 14 by two students at my school. Physical and sexual assaults continued for three years despite my attempts to report it. After two suicide attempts, I became one of your dropout statistics. It took eight years of mental and emotional rehabilitation to develop appropriate ways of coping. While I now seek justice in the form of prevention, protection, and accountability for kids today, I cannot deny that the helpless, defeated, and traumatized teenager I once was often thought of malicious retaliation. By failing to properly address and resolve the reports of bullying, physical and/or sexual harassment, we create more mental health issues and increase the odds and risk of violence. It is completely disheartening to see that almost 20 years later, the schools and county are still failing to provide proper safety to the students in our county. They are still exposed to peers who repeatedly exhibit violent behaviors and left with no choice but to defend themselves, then handed harsher consequences than the individual who has been given ample opportunity and endless resources to correct their behavior. The county and schools' prevention and reaction to these types of incidents are imperative to ensuring the safety of our students, especially in the wake of the tragic Florida school shooting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am.
I'd just leave you this evening with the wise words of Abraham Lincoln. You cannot evade the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today.
Thank you very much. Mr. Young, Mr. Holden, are you ready to go? Sure?
Thank you.
We're ready to hear you, sir.
You got it.
You can do it. You can do it. Come on.
Come on, Robert. Come on, Matt.
Just start, then it's easy. Just get started. There you go.
Go. Child, come on. Come on, you need to. Good.
Is it Raymond?
Robert, you need to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Thank you.
Raymond, how old are you? How old are you?
11.
11. What grade are you in?
Six.
Six. What school do you go to?
Lindell.
Lindell. What'd you come down here today to talk to us about? Just a big subject.
Bullying report.
Bullying.
Bullying.
Bullying? Being bullied at school? Did you write something for us? Did you write it?
We wrote it together.
Wrote it together? You and your mom? Can you tell us about it?
It's about the bully report, the bully reports we filled out and--
How it makes you feel.
How it makes me feel.
How does it make you feel?
Makes me feel alone, sad, and mad.
Yeah. How many bully reports have we filled out, Mom?
Three total right now. Possibly still going to go up.
Is it sixth graders or older kids?
I think mostly sixth graders.
Mostly sixth graders. You've been dealing with it all year?
Yeah.
Sorry to hear that. Thank you for coming out today, and thank you for telling us about it.
You're welcome.
Takes a lot of courage to do that. And bullies aren't here tonight, are they? But you are. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, sir. Mom? Mom, did you want to offer a comment?
I don't really remember what he wrote.
Just if you wanted to summarize or--
Just--
Is it -- we've heard a couple of testimonies tonight that there's not response on the part of the school system, and--
No, there's not.
I have to say, that's almost impossible to believe. It's not -- I'm not saying I don't believe you, but it's with the testimony that you're giving, it's difficult to understand that there's no--
No, we have filed for three bully reports over the Anarod County public, the website, and then we had gone to the school on one occasion. The only one that was actually addressed was the one that we physically went to the school for. The other three bully reports that were filed online never got contacted for. He was never pulled to discuss the matter, never wrote incident report or anything, so--
So, it's your impression that these -- let me see. It's a situation exists where you don't feel like you're being listened to?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Can I have your letter?
Yes, yeah.
Can I have the letter? Is it okay if I put it out at the end of this meeting and I put it out in my network just to spread your words for you? All right? I'm doing it.
Good. Mr. Walker?
Ma'am, when you had the one-on-one meeting, did you mention the fact that you'd filed the reports online through their system?
No, not for the one incident that we had addressed at the meeting that we had for him.
Okay. They didn't bring them up, obviously.
All the three incidents that happened with that were after the fact.
After the meeting that you had?
Yes, after we had the meeting.
Okay. And they didn't follow up with you after the meeting at all, or no?
No. Nope.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Pruski.
Normally, I don't chime in, but I served on the school board prior to my tenure on the council. Have you reached out to the Board of Education, the members at all?
Yes, we were recently at the Board of Ed meeting.
Okay. And again, I don't want to stir the pot, but one of the things that I always say is sometimes you have to move to the next level. And the way the school system works is beyond the principal, there's the area office and other folks, and certainly showing up to a board meeting and contacting them. Certainly, this council doesn't have a purview to deal with bullying. Obviously, I'm sure everyone, I could speak for them, that we don't, obviously, you know, support it and we want to condone it, but anything we can do to, obviously, to assist. But one of the things is, you just make sure you follow up. I certainly will, and I'm sure Councilman Smith and others. So, thank you for coming out, though.
Thank you.
We will follow up.
And, Mr. Chairman, it's not for the -- to Mr. Pruski's comment. We do sit as the Board of Health, and I would argue that anyone that's being bullied in our school is, in light of what's happened here in Florida as well, though we don't control some of the policies in the school system, I would argue as the Board of Health, we certainly have the right as a legislative body and the Board of Health members for the entire county to exert some sort of maybe leverage in that possible. And I'm certainly going to ask the Office of Law at some point, either tonight or this week, to see if they can let us know from the state perspective what does that mean? Because I would argue that bullying is a health issue, and if we are the Board of Health, then we should have the ability to address it, and that means either pulling in policies that affect the entire county and whatever industries or institutions that are in it. industries or institutions that are in it, including the school system. So, you will certainly hear us, at least certainly hear me bring that up, because I think maybe there's something we can do at least uncover for you. So, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Let me just summarize, let me just summarize by thanking you, Mr. Holden, Raymond Holden III. We're glad that you came here tonight because it, it, it's apparent to us that you've, you've now, you've stood up to this and that you started a process going that will have some results. So, we thank, we, no matter what happens going forward, we thank you for being here tonight, sir. Okay? With that, Mr. Shea.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Mike Shea here from Shadyside. For 25 years, I've been part of the leadership of South Arundel Citizens for Responsible Development, and hopefully I'll be the next delegate representing South County. But tonight, I want to share with you a victory, and victories are rare at this level. A 12-year struggle by South Arundel Citizens for Responsible Development to save important lands from inappropriate development. On February 7th, the Critical Area Commission had a decision concerning Turtle Run. It basically said, "No rule, regulation, or law in Anaronda County exists to transfer development rights into the critical area." So, the critical area law's implementation was saved in Anaronda County about transferring development rights. It does not exist. The Board of Appeals in this room on March 1st recently ended a year and a half, 25 hearings because the county and the developer had no case left to continue. Again, another victory. The county has a letter of intent to inquire these most important lands. Adjoining that Franklin Point, that sacred spearheaded the effort to save 500 acres of wooded wetlands and wildlands on the Chesapeake Bay that adjoin Turtle Run. A similar discussion happened, such as the developer gets bailed out. But I will share with you, these lands are the finest intact contiguous wetlands and wildlands on the western shore of the Chesapeake Bay. For Anaronda County, it's equivalent to the purchase of Alaska. South Arundel Citizens for Responsible Development was also involved in another contiguous saving of the property, Crandall Cove, the first attempted introduction of 32 apartments in the critical area. It was a square peg in a round hole. If it's for environmental reasons, we need to acquire all of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Shea. Thank you very much. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate it. At this time, we'll just have last calls. Is there anybody else that wants to address the council on items that are not on the agenda? Come on down and take a seat. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, this is last call. Here we go. Ms. Johnson, we'll start with you. Good evening.
Could you show us where?
Sure. We'll start at this end.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening. Name and address, please, in two minutes.
Hi. Oh, sorry. Christine McCormick, 446 West Maple Road, Lythrum Heights, Maryland. And I want to start off by thanking you all, and I want to thank Councilman Smith because he's been working extremely hard for us in Lythrum. And my story basically is along the same as everyone else's as far as the bullying is concerned and the Board of Education. My story is, I have a set of twins. They entered Lindale Middle School in Lythrum in 2014. They were the largest sixth-grade class to enter the school at the time. On October 13th of 2014, my twins, their lives changed forever. My daughter went down an overcrowded stairwell while her brother watched helplessly from the bottom. My daughter has a permanent traumatic brain injury due to that. My son was assaulted two times in 2014 at Lindale, two times in 2015, two times in 2016. My daughter was assaulted two times in 2015, five times in 2016. No repercussions for the offenders for any of these incidences. They were all handled by Anaronda County Police. One of the children that assaulted my daughter four times, the school did nothing. I know that because I appealed it, took it from Juvenile Services all the way up to Circuit Court. And the Circuit Court judge for Juvenile Services actually asked the parents, "What did you, like, what did the school do?" Nothing. They just said, "Boys will be, boys will be boys," and he thought she was pretty. And she said, "As a parent, what did you do?" Nothing. So, the judge basically gave the child, she'd said she was giving him literally the max of everything, like... So, I would like to request the county council, I would like to request your help with the Board of Education. I'm one of the co-founders for the Anaronda County Parent Coalition, and we by all means will offer, like, as far as being a focus group, we have hundreds and hundreds of parents following us right now. And the Board of Education, we've been up and down the chain of command numerous times. I reached out, actually with Councilman Smith approximately about a month ago to the Regional Superintendent. He has yet to even respond to me. I have a ban placed against me for Lindale Middle School because the principal does not like me. He has not offered a legitimate reason on why I'm banned as far as like a no trespass letter. That has been going on since the end of November, beginning of December. I've been trying to get that lifted, and nothing. Dr. Cubic is aware. Superintendent Monique Jackson is also aware. The Board of Education has, basically, is failing us. They are failing Anaronda County.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Would you repeat your name for me?
Christine McCormick.
McCormick. Thank you very much. Sir?
Hi, here's Chairman. My name is, my name is William Kraus. I live at 1528 Warfield Road on the Mayo Peninsula. For about two years now, I and other residents of the peninsula have been coming to the county with a common request and a common concern. The concern is about the pace of development and its impact on limited infrastructure and the safety of the citizens and the environment. For two years, we have gotten very little for that effort. We succeeded in attacking one bill that the county executive had presented. Now, I understand from the papers that the county executive has gotten religion. I would submit to you that there is a certain level of skepticism there, and it's because of things like Turtle Bay, Turnbull, and all the other dark little operations that operate under the surface that don't quite make the executive's press statements. As they say in the Russian language, "Добрый и проверен." Trust, but verified. I would submit to the council that when the county executive comes to you with his grand plan to control development while he quietly tries to control public response to it, that you address it with skepticism. You are our witnesses. And I don't think any of you are anxious to have as your political epitaph the death of the quality of life that all of you grew up with and that we are fighting to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Name and address, please. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening. Renee Vasquez, 858 Swift Road, Pasadena. I've been fortunate enough that my three children, a senior in high school, Chesapeake High School, a sophomore at Chesapeake High School, and a fourth grader at Lake Shore Elementary have not been exposed to much of the issues that many other students have. That being said, over the past few weeks, there has been a very clear picture painted of the issues at the schools that are not being addressed by the administration. My older two boys have both told me that they will, they'll sit and struggle through AP and honors classes and have to fight to get decent grades in there rather than sit in a standard-level class because of the behavior of the students. They're horrid. There are no consequences. I have seen firsthand when I worked at the middle school that students would be sent to the office for being disruptive and were told to go right back to class. After so many years of that, the students realize, "Hey, nothing's going to happen. I can do whatever I want." And the teachers become just, they get, they, they don't know what to do anymore because they're not being supported by the administrators. Well, if that continues at the middle school level, then they get to high school and it's even worse. So, I have two kids struggling in AP and honors classes so they can avoid the standard-level classes because generally there's a, there's a different demeanor within the students and how they approach the classes themselves. The schools really need to have a full audit of their bullying and not ju, and independent audit of bullying reports and the behaviors in general, as well as there needs to be a clear differentiation between what is defined as bullying and criminal actions. And possibly those criminal actions need detention or maybe mental health services for those students that are actually being the bullies. And I think the schools very much are trying to overlook all of it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Dawn Zabron. I live at 189 Glen Road, Pasadena, Maryland. I'm here today to ask you to fully fund Anaronda County Public Schools, their budget, and request that an annual audit or review of these funds is done to ensure they're used for what they budgeted for. To ensure a safe learning environment for all students, I request that the school system be held accountable and required to provide the community and stakeholders with better communication of information, transparency, and oversight. Assurance that efficient and effective policies and procedures are in place. Assurance that all school staff are aware of those policies and procedures and know what's expected of them. Specifically, I request the county to require mandatory reporting of bullying and biased behaviors by all staff that see or hear it happening or when it is brought to their attention by the student or family involved. A review and audit of bully-informed student placements, administrative and adjustment transfers, and documentation. Provide additional funding and staff and supportive resources to comprehensive schools that house regional programs to include social and emotional learning, character-building lessons and supports, mental health awareness, life skills. Require mandatory mental health screenings, home health checks, monitoring for repeat violent offenders to identify possible risks for students. Additional supports and county wraparound services. Require a full-time psychologist, social worker counselor, and SRO assigned each middle and high school. Require students with weapons in their possession or charged or adjudicated with a serious violent crime, regardless of manifestation of disabilities, to be transferred to an alternative educational facility and not transferred to a regional program or to another school in the system. To ensure preventive measures are in place, to ensure weapons are not brought into school, fund an additional alternative educational facility and additional classrooms, teachers, assistants, and any additional resources required by Chesapeake High School Regional Program to meet the needs of all students. In addition to funding for AACBS, request additional funding for CIT Crisis Response Team, mental health, and funding for county police SRO program.
Thank you, ma'am. And particularly, I thank you for your specificity. Appreciate your preparation. Ms. Johnson? Oh, Ms., excuse me. Mr. Smith?
Ma'am, last, can you email that to us as well?
Sure.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Julie Johnson, P.O., Box 6634, Annapolis. I spent time yesterday and today looking back over history because I was going to talk about my concerns about the, there's nationwide issues about banning, you know, changing the, you know, the Second Amendment and the guns. Tonight, I have, I can't avoid talking about what I have heard from parents and from the people from the Mayo Peninsula. I, I am so grateful that citizens care enough to come forward and tell the government that it's not working. It is failing the public regularly, repeatedly, you know, year after year. And your coming out tonight is critical. It is essential to your getting the help for your families and your children, and you give them the opportunity to do what they know is right because you've made it necessary, just like some of the politicians have said in, in earlier years, like back during World War II, and FDR said, "Make me do what you want me to do." And so, with the Mayo Peninsula, I would like to refer some of you to a 2006 DVD about President Trump's, the development of a, the golf course in Aberdeen. The title is "You've Been Trumped," and the violation of the environmental laws, the ravages inflicted, and, you know, I salute you for being out here, for standing up, you know, and for speaking out. And you have to fight for it because you know. All you have to do is look in the audience and you know the speakers who are going to speak later about, "Oh, we need more development." And of course, the taxpayers need to subsidize the development because, you know, we're just going broke. And then, you know, but you've heard that before. But we cannot survive without nature. We cannot survive without decent schools. And my heart goes out to all of your children.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you very much. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you all.
Ms. Chair?
Mr. Walker?
I, I just wanted to acknowledge that we did receive the letters from the neighbors of the Mayo Peninsula Group. We, we do have in our possession that letter, and I have been in contact with folks from that organization about the response that they're looking for, and we'll be working with them on that. So, just want to let you all know because I know that everyone here, I'm pretty sure everyone here received it in their email. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Ms. Chairman, I guess my last comment on this school thing. Because, oh, no, it's such a hot item right now, and we've seen on national news how the schools are affected by the temperature that's taking place right now. But it's more specifically with this body. You know, we have, what's, several months in this term, and I, and I would ask all of us to really focus on this school, particularly bully issue and other mental health issues that exist in the schools for the remainder of this, this term. And I think it's so important that folks like Raymond, I mean, if we ever come up with some piece of legislation, I hope we call it Raymond's Law. So, I want you to know that's what we're going to call it, to sort of require us to be much more involved, because we do hear it a lot as council members, and we get a lot of pushback from the, from the community who want us to do something, and we're almost like our hands are tied because the school board really controls all the policies when it comes to school-related activities and things like that. That is the ground truth. But I would ask us to really explore this Board of Health thing when it comes to the, the bullying piece, because I really do think that there's a tie there to, to, to health, and we should take a very super active role to make sure that we're doing everything we can on our end as the legislators and leaders in this county to ensure that those, those policies or knowledge is being shared or audits are being done so we know that there is act, action being taken so that when Raymond's Law passed, it'll be, it'll be one of those mandated things that occur. So, I really want us to take a hard look at this over the next few months before we end this cycle. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate that very much. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? I have a motion to the partial reading of any bill resolution or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole.
So move, Ms. Chair.
Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of February 20th, 2018.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Michael Peruca at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Mr. Pruski, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scout Troop 769 from Odenton.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 20th, 2018.
So move, Ms. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The minutes of February 20th, 2018 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 1718, An Ordinance Concerning Administrative Zoning Reclassifications Temporary Moratorium. Bill Number 1818, An Ordinance Concerning Board of Appeals Variances, Odenton Town Center, Zoning Administrative Hearings Special Exceptions. Bill Number 1918, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Administrative Hearings, Notices, and Signs. Bill Number 2018, An Ordinance Concerning Fire Services, Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement, Fire Prevention Code, Fire Hydrants.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 518, Resolution Concerning a Determination by the County Council to Engage the Services of Clifton Larson Allen, LLP, an Independent Firm of Certified Public Accountants, to Perform the Financial Audit for Fiscal Year 2018. Resolution 618, Resolution Proposing an Amendment to the Charter of Anaronda County to Add a Provision Requiring a Comprehensive Zoning Bill and All Amendments Be Consistent with the County's General Development Plan as Determined by the Planning and Zoning Officer.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 38- Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 318 as amended.
Bill Number 318 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Limited Distilleries and Distilleries.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Pruski?
Nothing to add. We discussed it last time. There's that one amendment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, Bernie Marzick from County Executive Shoe's Office. For the record, just one point I wanted to make that the auditor pointed out is an unattended consequence of this bill is that wineries are no longer be allowed in W-3. We didn't anticipate any issues with that, but at some point in the future, if wineries are going to locate in W-3, we may come back with legislation to fix that.
Okay. You're not doing that now?
We are not, no, sir.
Okay. Madam Auditor, did you have something?
The problem was when the, the wineries are discussed separately, the, the beer is discussed separately, and we've removed, now we've got the distilleries defined separately. The way it, we used to have W-3 zoning available for wineries because there was a clause in there that said alcohol, producers of alcohol were allowed. And I don't have it in front of me because I wasn't prepared to pass this, but it, the way it is now, since we've taken out the words alcoholic beverages from the table of permitted conditional and special exception uses from the W-1, 2, and 3 zones, that now wineries can only be in, what is it, the agriculture and certain residential streets. So if you wanted to have a, a winery, not necessarily a vineyard, but a winery that produces the wine in an industrial zone, you wouldn't be able to do it under this.
True, under the code, the winery also has to grow a portion of the grapes in order to operate as a winery in our county. So whether or not there's W-3 available to grow the grapes and then turn it into wine is, is the other part of the issue. There is a component where, same with breweries, that some of the farm breweries, they also have to grow some of the product that is used for the wine.
Okay, yes, Mr. Hager, good evening, sir.
Good evening. This may well be an artifact from a time previous when we did not have craft breweries and the niches of the things that we have today, and when typically you would look for a brewery or a winery or some type of activity, you would be looking at, in essence, an industrial type of activity which would have been appropriate in industrial zone. Now with the evolution of things the way they are today, I think it's appropriate that we take the action that we're looking at today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're agreed we're, that this is an issue that, that we're not dealing with now. Okay. Is anything further from the administration? Then we'll open the public hearing. Any, the following, oh, excuse me, anyone, we have a sign-up sheet for this?
No.
No. Does anybody like to testify on this matter? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 318 as amended.
Bill Number 318 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Limited Distilleries and Distilleries.
Is there any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 318 as amended.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 318 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 518.
Bill Number 518, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $16 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the Village South at Wallchapel Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the Village South at Wallchapel Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, Village South at Wallchapel Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale, Delivery, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick in the County Executive's Office with me at the table, John Hammond from the Budget Office, Karen McQuade from the Finance Office, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, and Bill Hen, our outside counsel. As we discussed at the work session, Bill 518 authorizes a refund and reissue of up to $16 Million of special obligation bonds previously sold to realize savings of lower cost of borrowing now, and this is for Village South at Wallchapel. Savings from the lower cost will result in a lower special tax rates being applied to the property tax bills and properties within this special tax district. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Are there any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Pruski, this is your bill. You're okay with it?
Yeah, as discussed at the last meeting, Mr. Hammond pointed out, this is actually good for the county.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We did have a good discussion at the work session about this, but I'm, I'm looking at the auditor's blue letter, and for this particular bond refund, she says that the approximate savings is four and a half million. And I understand you'll actually, you know, have to, I guess, do that, and it says late April or May where you do the bond issuance, so you'll know that exact number. But is that an estimate over the life of the bonds? And if, if so, how does, I know, I know that the county is receiving some benefit or getting some savings itself, and how will we realize that? Is it every year we get a little bit of that, or is it a lump sum at the front or all at the back end? I'm just curious.
Every year we get a little bit.
Okay. So that's four and a half million divided by what, 20, 30? Minus, minus the part that goes back to the bondholders, I guess.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the, the life of these bonds will be about 22 years. Because they were originally 30-year bonds, they're able to be refunded after eight years, so about 22 years.
Okay, so we shouldn't expect a budget windfall from this.
Every, every, every little bit helps.
I know that, especially when you compare things in the currency of Natty Bo's, right?
But it's all relative to in the big picture, yeah.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else, any other questions? Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. We will now open the public hearing on Bill 518. Does anybody want to testify on 518? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing on 518. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 518.
Bill Number 518, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $16 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the Village South at Wallchapel Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the Village South at Wallchapel Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, Village South at Wallchapel Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale, Delivery, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any final discussion? Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll on Bill 518?
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
I am going to vote yes because Mr. Hammond's going to be here in 22 years to show us this, this savings, so. See you in 22 years, Mr. Hammond, so yes.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 518 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 618.
Bill Number 618, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the National Business Park North Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the National Business Park North Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, National Business Park North Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale, Delivery, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, as we discussed at the work session as well, Bill 618 authorizes a refund and reissue of up to $30 Million of special obligation bonds previously sold in order to realize savings from the lower cost of borrowing currently, and this is for National Business Park North. The savings from the lower cost of borrowing will result in lower special tax rates being applied to the property tax bills on the properties within this special tax district. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council has on this.
Thank you, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions? If not, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody would like to testify on Bill 618? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 618.
Bill Number 618, An Ordinance Concerning the Issue and Sale and Delivery of Special Obligation Refunding Bonds in an Aggregate Principal Amount Not to Exceed $30 Million in One or More Series to Be Secured by Taxes Levied on the Tax Increment on Property in the National Business Park North Development District, Special Taxes on Property in the National Business Park North Special Taxing District, and a Guarantee Provided by Anaronda County, Maryland to Refund All or a Portion of the Outstanding Anaronda County, Maryland Special Obligation Bonds, National Business Park North Project, Series 2010, and Determining Certain Terms and Provisions in Connection with the Issue and Sale, Delivery, and Payment of Such Bonds.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any final discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 618.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 618 is passed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Please read the title of Bill 718.
Bill Number 718, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes in Annapolis Solar Park.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick from the County Executive's Office with me at the table is John Hammond from the Budget Office, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, and we have representatives from Annapolis Solar Park here as well to answer any questions the council has. As we discussed at the work session, Bill 718 approves exemptions from the county's property taxes for Annapolis Solar Park, which is located on the former city of Annapolis landfill off the fence highway and Interstate 97. The city and the council has approved a lease, excuse me, the city of Annapolis has leased the former landfill to Annapolis Solar Park in order for them to construct and operate a 12-megawatt generating facility. The entire output of this electricity generated by the facility will be used by Anaronda County Board of Education, the city of Annapolis, and Anaronda County. Under the pilot, the payment to the county will be $100, and the pilot will expire on June 30th, 2039. We'd be, do a technical amendment to offer a deappropriate time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Thanks, Mr. Marzick. Are there any questions?
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Thank you. Mr. Marzick, just for the record, how much property tax would the county be expected to make on this property if it was just still a vacant landfill?
Zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbauer. Anything further?
I'm trying to help you out, man.
I understand.
Probing question. Thank you. There's no other questions. We'll open the public hearing. Would anybody like to testify on this matter? Seeing no, seeing no movement, public hearing is closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 718.
Bill Number 718, An Ordinance Concerning Payment in Lieu of Taxes in Annapolis Solar Park.
That was easy compared to reading the last title, wasn't it? Is there any discussion? There's a technical amendment? Excuse me, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one. I'm sorry.
Amendment number one, this technical amendment removes the designation of city of from Annapolis.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I can just clarify what it is. This property is owned by the city of Annapolis. It's not in the city of Annapolis. That's what this amendment is clarifying.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Amendment number one is adopted.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please call, wait a minute.
That's great.
Oh, okay, so now we're going to vote on the bill. All right, Madam, no further discussion, right? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 718 as amended.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. Bill Number 718 as amended is passed.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 818.
Bill Number 818, An Ordinance Concerning Animal Control, Food and Water for Animals.
Thank you. Mr. Grasso is the sponsor, and Mr. Grasso is not here. Is anybody pitch hitting for Mr. Grasso?
Can I make a motion that Mr. Fink has to explain this legislation? It's for the chum chums. Can I get a second? It's for the chum chums.
That, that failed for lack of a second, so we will move to Mr. Marzick.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office with me at the table, Herb Hasenbush from the Police Department, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. We were supportive of this bill. We were understanding that Mr. Grasso or someone was offering amendment to exempt farm animals. Is that going?
Not, not tonight.
We're going to hold the bill tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so we would be supportive of that as well, so. We'll wait for two weeks.
Make a motion to hold?
Well, we're going to have the public hearing. In fact, I could ask you to hold that, Mr. Smith, please. We'll, we'll have the public hearing. Would anybody like to testify on this matter at this time?
We do have someone.
Please come down.
You have to get up, sorry. We have the...
Oh, I'm sorry, there is John Faber. Mr. John Faber signed up, and thank you, sir. Is there, is there anybody else who wants to testify? Please come down now and take one of these chairs, okay? Thank you. Mr. Faber, please go.
Yes, John Faber, 4570 Owensville Sudley Road in Harwood, Maryland, and I'm president of Anaronda County Farm Bureau. I just wanted to speak briefly on this bill. The act community does have a few issues with the bill as it's written, and we'd be very much in favor of an amendment exempting livestock.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Mr. Walker.
Just for clarification purposes, I think part of the issue, there's, there's a couple of issues. One of the issues is that the bill requires potable water, and just as we've seen when electric goes out, which it has gone out for many of our folks over the past couple of days, farmers in particular are impacted because if they get potable water, which is water that's able to be drank and consumed by humans, from a filtered system that is part of the well or whatever, it precludes them from being able to, potentially precludes them from being able to use water from a pond. And I actually have a farmer right now who is out of power, and he is transporting water to beef cattle that he's raising and all of his livestock. So if he had a pond on the property, he could use that, and so we're just concerned that this sort of puts so much regulation on the farms and farmers that it causes issues with regards to how they protect and care for their animals, and for them, the animals are a huge investment. They're not going to allow water to freeze and not have their animals have access to clean water of some kind or another, because obviously they have a lot of money wrapped up and tied up into those investments into livestock and animals, so.
Yes, sir.
That's a concern that I had pointed out to them, and they shared the concern with me as well, so.
Thank you. Did you have a question for Mr.?
I don't. I was just making a statement, sort of tying on to what Mr. Faber said.
Ms. Tate has a question for you, sir.
Yes. In review of the request from the Farm Bureau, the office took a look at the COMAR requirements that are put in place by the Department of Agriculture for the state of Maryland, and there are several spots that are referenced where potable water is required for livestock. So the question I guess I have is, if Anaronda County gives you a pass on this, whether or not we're able to do that, because you're subject to other regulations at the state level in terms of how you care for the livestock. So that's the question.
I'd definitely like to look at that code, because it would be like Councilmember Walker said, potable water is, potable water has concerns human consumption.
Well, and that word is used specifically in the issue that we have at the county is if the state has already put in regulations in place, you know, necessarily we can't go behind the state's regulations and make them less stringent. So Mr. Walker has spoken to me about your request, and that was one of the issues that I wanted to speak with you about tonight and to make sure we were on the same page about that. So if you don't know, I'll get back to you.
I don't know, yes.
Okay, thanks.
But I certainly can find out.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Trumbauer.
Just for Ms. Tate, is potable defined in our code as being drinkable by humans?
It's, in the definition, it doesn't say, it's, you know, it's in Webster's Dictionary, and when, you know, we don't have an R code, we take the common use that is used for that, and that is water that is suitable for drinking, so that would be water that is free from contamination as well as not frozen, because you can't drink frozen water. So those are, when we were taking into account the words used in this bill, the potable has to do, we were using the definition that is widely circulated, so that we try to make the code easy for anybody to read.
So the concern that Councilmember Walker articulated, I mean, obviously is a legitimate concern. What's potable to Councilmember Trumbauer is different than what's potable to a, you know, dairy cow, presumably.
Well, I don't know what the Department of Agriculture, that's my only concern, is what our Department of Agriculture says is potable.
Legally, legally, do you agree that this needs a fix? Or are you saying it's okay?
I don't think it needs a fix, provided that we are not going on something less stringent for the livestock, as I spoke to Mr. Grasso, who's not here.
So from your interpretation...
It was inferred that this was regarding household pets. It wasn't discussing livestock, so that's the issue here, so.
But the title for animal control doesn't specify a difference between farm animals and pet animals, or does it?
No, it doesn't. And, you know, what I said to Mr. Grasso was, I would presume that the farmer who's invested that kind of money in livestock is going to make sure that the water is potable, which means suitable for drinking. And the issue with the Department of Agriculture is something that I would, wanted to try to sort out with the people that actually take care of livestock every day, as to what they believe, think that is.
Well, we have two weeks to sort it out, it sounds like, so I'm confident.
We're not, Ms. Tate, I mean, I'm just not, I'm not going to argue, I'm not arguing with you, just asking more of a question.
I'm not arguing with you either. I'm just telling you what the law says.
What is, the way that, couldn't this be set up in such a way that we basically exempt them from Mr. Grasso's bill? I guess by separating the livestock out and letting them...
Even if I did that, Mr. Walker, they still have to comply with the state.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I understand that.
Can I, excuse me, let me chime in on that, because it seems to me that the opposite or the mirror image of that same argument about the state is that if the state's already got the regulation, there's no reason for us to do it, right? I mean, if it's already there, then there's no reason for us to duplicate it.
Ms. Tate, does that specifically reference to livestock in the state code, or is it to all animals?
It's in the Department of Agriculture. It's dealing with livestock, so that's...
With livestock specifically.
Right, and I mean, that's the issue. We're adding a few words in a code that has been in existence for some time, and livestock have been included in that. So whether or not animal control really goes out and checks the water that's being provided for livestock, I don't know. And they're not here, so.
Mr. Faber, good, sir.
The Safe Drinking Water Act, the Federal Safe Drinking Water Act of 1970, doesn't even mention nor define potable water.
You know, how do you pronounce this word?
Potable.
My mother, she should say potable, that, I mean...
On Jeopardy, they say potable.
Well, they say, if they say it on Jeopardy, that's it, then.
Alex Trebek.
Alex Trebek.
But he's Canadian.
But apparently, there is some, there's some question that Mr. Trumbauer raised about whether potable for livestock is potable for humans is...
That was my, Mr. Chair, why not just put a definition in here that says potable means drinkable by animals? Then you're done. But it's Grasso's bill, he's not here, let's let him sort it out, right? I mean, I figure like we could talk about this all night, but it's, the sponsor's not even here.
Like, so we're kind of wasting it, right?
It's like we're filling a void that is left by Mr. Grasso not being here. We even, someone said chum chums. I mean, we really obviously miss him very much.
That's right. All right, well then, all right, then we'll draw that to a close. Where are we?
Moving to hold, I believe, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Closing the public hearing.
We'll close the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Faber.
Thank you, Mr. Faber. Appreciate it very much. All right, do I have a motion to hold?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have to take a vote on a motion to hold? Do we have to call the roll?
It hasn't been amended or anything.
Yes.
Why not?
Let's do it.
Aye.
Let's do it, yeah. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Okay.
There's a motion to hold this bill.
Motion to hold the vote on Bill Number 818. Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Six in the affirmative, one absent. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 818 is adopted.
Thank you. So Bill Number 818 will come back for vote on March 19th, 2018. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 918.
Bill Number 918. An ordinance concerning zoning certificate of use publication.
Thank you. Mr. Smith is the sponsor.
Yes, so I did speak with Mr. Marzick, as well as the planning and zoning officer, Mr. Hager, and so they believe that there is another solution that potentially with the IT department that can put, some of this data does exist already, ready? I am willing to withdraw the bill, not right now. I'm going to postpone it, ask later to postpone it till the 19th. But essentially, what this bill and what I'm asking them to do is so that whenever a non-residential entity is setting up business in a location, whether that's, I mean, a commercial, C1, C2, whatever it is, that that data is actually put online, not when it's approved, because I know some of the data that Mr. Hager had mentioned before is that some of this data is already, is in a online format. I haven't seen it yet. I haven't been able to find that website, but I'm also asking for businesses that are even petitioning to be or requesting to open up shop within a community or within a development, particularly because I think a lot of the communities that I've been interacting with specifically in the northern part of the county, Lentigam, Brooklyn Park, we've had businesses that have opened up up there, which is fine, but half the time, if not majority of the time, a lot of them don't know that that business has been, has opened up until after they already, you know, opening the doors. And so this gives the community the ability to go online on a day-to-day basis and actually see who's requesting to open up a particular shop or business entity within a commercial establishment or a commercial park. And so it just takes it out of our hands, and not necessarily our hands, the council, but allows the community to be much more aware of what's potentially coming into their neighborhoods or their community plazas, so that if they have concerns about it, they can make sure their concerns are addressed or heard with the county. So that's my intent behind the bill. How that is played out on a IT solution standard remains to be seen. I think that there is a workable solution here. I'm going to try to meet with the IT department over the next week or so to see if these concerns could be addressed and implemented over the coming weeks and/or months, because they may not be operational right now, but the intent is for it certainly to be within the very near future. But that's the intent behind the bill, again, to give the communities the ability to see what is coming into their community plazas. And this stemmed from a plasma center that opened up in the Glenburn-Lentigam area, and we didn't necessarily know about it until it was opened. Now, it obviously has a legitimate purpose, but I still want the community to be able to know exactly, you know, what is anticipated to be opening up in a particular area. So that's why this bill was submitted. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Can I, before we go to Mr. Marzick, can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
And I've heard everything you've said. I don't, I'm not asking you to repeat what you said, but I'm still a little unsure of the problem that this bill is intended to solve. Is it that you might worry that a dry cleaner's going to open that's going to have environmental issues?
No, no, that's not it. Every business that's opened in Anaronda County has a certificate of use. Is that correct, Mr.? Every single one of them, and you can go at least request through the county businesses and to see, on the certificate of use, it actually has the leadership of that business, what the purpose of that business, and maybe some other administrative data. Typically, you can request that once it's approved.
Right.
And you can see that, if a citizen wants to see that. The purpose isn't to see if a dry cleaner or any specific business, but for those consumer, for those citizens who are consumer junkies and they want to know what's coming into the area, they can just simply go online right now, and, or the end state is for them to be able to just go online and research this.
But where I'm going with this is, is it your thought that the community has, should have the ability to object to a certain business?
Well, not necessarily. I think the first step is just being transparent on, so they know what's going in their neighborhood. We've had businesses that were a suboxin clinic, for example, that should have applied and submitted for a certificate of use. I don't think they did, at least the landowner, then go through the proper process in that particular instance, but the community didn't even know about it until it was already open. There were some other entities like that, not necessarily suboxin or drug-related, but they didn't know about it until it was already open. So all I'm trying to do is give citizens who want to know what's going into the community plaza down the street from their house, oh, what business has applied for a certificate of use? Because then they'll know what it is, just so they know. It's not about stopping a particular one, but more of arming the citizens with information that affects their neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Marzick?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marzick, County Executive's Office. With me at the table, Phil Hager from the Planning and Zoning Officer. We have talked with Mr. Smith about this request. We, excuse me, the county planning and zoning website already compiles most, if not all, of this information already. It's just not in a, I guess, central or easily accessible spot, and we've pledged to work with Mr. Smith to get him the data that he's looking for in a way that would hopefully be useful to his constituents and your constituents as well. So our IT office and planning and zoning will work closely with him and hopefully be able to produce something in the next week that will be workable, so the bill's not necessary.
This is no different than if a development, a residential development's going up, you will see a red sign outside of that, somewhere on that property when you're driving past, and they're going to say, oh, there's going to be a community meeting about this development,